Good evening. This is the City Council meeting on February 7, 2022, at 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised on the City's newspaper. Otherwise, all this is sunshine.
Swan.
Here.
Baden-Forth.
Present.
February 11.
Here.
Thomas.
President.
Sabona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sishtrom.
Present.
Oliver Titt.
You're taking the promotion to bring this minute slowly. This is agenda items.
First on the agenda is the Oval Office for Police Sergeant Matthew LaElli. Can you come forward and also move over to the door and be so popular? Want to come around here? Over there, I just want you. You want me?
No, you're good.
Okay. Okay, this is the office of, excuse me, the Oval Office. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
I, Matthew LaElli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And the State of New Jer- of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I'll bear. That I'll bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments.
And the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of.
Of the Office of Pleasantville Sergeant for the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Sergeant Matthew LaElli.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to, good luck to you, thank you.
Thank you.
And for all that you do, and be safe.
I will, thank you.
Continue, okay.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, everyone.
So, just so everyone knows, Sergeant Matthew LaElli, I'm enjoying all this to see how nervous he is. I'm really enjoying it. But he's been with us just about nine years now. He was a K-9 officer for about five of those years. Matt's always been an energetic guy, you know, so I'm looking forward to him taking that energy to supervise, you know, his squad. So I think he'll do a really good job, and we're all looking forward to it. There's his guys back there in support of him tonight, so we're all looking forward to you doing a good job, and I think you will.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, and be safe out there.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Sergeant Matthew, pronounce your last name.
LaElli.
LaElli, all right, nice. God bless you, Godspeed. Everybody smile in the back, and smile in the room, so you must be a fun guy to work with.
Thank you, sir. A pleasure.
Sure. Why is your mom dead?
Yes, it's my fiancee. We're getting married in August 9th next year. It's my oldest, Alani, my youngest, or my youngest daughter, Madison. Our two sons couldn't be here, they both got pinkeye, and gave it to me. That's why they're not here. It's my dad, Bruce LaElli, and my mom marrying.
Congratulations.
Hey, can anybody hear me?
Nope.
They hear me now. I just, no. I'm here to present the third quarter capital report for the city, just by way of projects that have changed, advanced, or funding opportunities that have manifested. The recreation center, the boxing ring, that will be, it's actually been delivered, and installation is anticipated for next week, November 14. The city did get HMGP funding for the generator over at the recreation center. We've submitted a proposal for that, which is pending authorization. Ansley Boulevard, that work is, I don't want to say substantially complete, but the sewer portion is done. They're running a conduit for the lighting, and they will return, and they'll pave. They'll get the final paving done this year, but they're gonna have to return probably in March with the light fixtures, as well as the landscaping, so that'll occur at that time. But beyond that, it is substantially complete. Decatur Avenue, so that project has been awarded. That contractor is anticipating mobilizing lightning next week. I know we sent something over to administration today just to confirm staging areas, so that we get that approved. We had a DOT project for resurfacing on Tunis, Harrison, and Prospect. That project is substantially complete and is in punchless phase. We continue to work with the state on the Downey Road, Park Avenue project. That was phased, and we've sought extensions of time to award that. We're also working with the DOT. We were given a streetscape grant for improvements along the Black Horse Pike. We sought an extension of that, and we're looking for some alternate ways to fund that project as well. We also redesigned and actually submitted to the DOT. We have a streetscape grant for improvements along old turnpike, specifically from Main Street to Franklin Boulevard. That's into the DOT. We expect that we'll be able to build that project in November. The dredging project, we do anticipate that we'll have the Army Corps coming up, we're hopeful shortly, that that project can move forward into construction. We did prepare a backwater valve ordinance for the city's consideration. That's been submitted.
It's gonna prove.
It's been upgraded. We also submitted, or actually submitted, we're working on the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. It's referred to like the SPP plan. The DEP has asked the city to get that information in, and I know that the council have adopted new stormwater ordinance, that is in the works as well. We also submitted a proposal over to the city to do an update, basically an assessment of the roads and the sewer within the city, and that's pending authorization as well. That's basically all of the projects since last quarter. Happy to answer any questions.
Question. You just said that, you talked about an assessment for, is that the entire city?
Yes, it's for the entire city. Post-sanity, the city was actually wanting two grants for planning documentation. We worked on that, which at that time did include an inventory of our roads, as well as assessment of the storm system. So this would basically be to update that document, because as I recall, when I was slightly older than 2016, so it would be to update that, which will help you for capital planning as you move forward.
Do you have the old one? The old assessment?
Oh, yes.
You don't?
Yes.
Could I possibly get a copy of it?
Oh, yes, I'll absolutely send it over to the committee's attention.
Any more questions?
Yes. Lauren, the last time that he gave you report, he said we were gonna do Park Avenue. I don't see that on here. Did I, oh, you went upstairs, so I didn't look at it.
I'm so sorry. So we have grants for Dowdy and Park Avenue, and that was actually through two different funding cycles. So we phased it, we phased those improvements. We have a 2021 grant and a 2022 grant, but sanitary upgrades are required, so that's a big part of additional funding. So we haven't advanced those yet, but we have sought an extension from the DOT to award those projects.
So is this the Park Avenue, which we were saying, Dowdy and Dowdy Road and that? Is this the area that we've been talking about, that residential area we're having?
Yes, it is.
And just to add to what Lauren stated, the supplemental funding that is needed for the sewer infrastructure was applied for through the I-Bank. That was the I-Bank money that we applied for, and we're waiting for final approval for that.
Right.
Thank you, everybody enjoy your night.
Next, the best practice you do, Barry. Mr. Luke.
I'm sorry. Approaching from the Deserby section. I'm doing it anyway, I'm good with your better. Best practices, so.
Good evening. I believe all you have, that probably the best practice in the story submitted by the state, we have played on annual basis. There's a number of questions, I think this year, like 16, 65 questions. Most of them are not scored, major frank information from you, but other ones are scored. And the idea behind it, if you don't reach a certain point, the last quarter, last month of the state aid, they will deduct 5% or 10% of it, depending on how low your score is. As far as I know, we've never been below the score. Nearly were to 90, 95% percentile, which we are again this year. Do you have any questions that, and if you go through there, there are some, like the first one, you'll see unscored survey, they're just asking you information from us. And then you'll see, if you go back into page two, your 13 things are scored, meaning you get points for answering questions correctly. You have zero points if for some reason you don't adhere to your policies. Some of the problems that we've had, and actually there's no problems with any of us in here. The only ones we didn't score 100% were, we do not have any EV stations, we don't have any EV vehicles, and that's one of the things they're trying to push for. So we don't have those, so obviously we have no points for them. But all the other ones, as you go through there, questions regarding financial administration, cybersecurity, how often do you train? We make sure we train everybody at least once a year, based on JIF. Do we do the user-friendly budget, produce that? Do we do an annual financial statement? Do we do an annual debt statement, all in the first couple months of the year, which is what we do? And there's other things that have to do with, do you maintain a municipal website? Yes, we do, as you go to question 22. All these really have to do with how we run the municipality, both the financial end of it, as well as the administration end of it, and any other areas of what they think are concerns, guidelines, rules, regulations that they promulgate, and make sure that we're adhering to those regulations. I don't know if you had a chance to look through all these, but there's 56, 56, 58 questions or more, and it was just, I mean, we do very well, we've always done very well, because we adhere to the regulations by the state. Do we have, I mean, there's a lot of questions in there. I think, hopefully, if you have a chance to look at them before we, not just in case you have any questions, let you know. And then, for one, I go over here and question, but I'll say, we'll be here until tomorrow. Wish I don't want to do either.
No questions?
Yes.
I know, I said it committed when we went over.
Correct.
This report, but when will you be, when will you send it on?
This has to be in by November 10th. It's already going on. In fact, it went out in November 1st. And what they, what they do is we have to have it by a certain, actually, original date was November 2nd. If we send it in, they said they dropped it down to 10th. All we have to do is advise you and go over it, that what we did, and if there's any problems with it, we have to let you know that you're in a problem with it. But everything, the state has required us, like I said, the original date was November 2nd, it had to be in. And after we send it in, November 1st, state changes to November 10th.
Those are four of them.
So when does our ready submit it, when we met?
What, what committee did you go through?
It went through the finance committee, and the process, pardon, I'm making sure here, part of the process is not for City Council to determine what the answers are, so that is not the issue. Part of the process is that whatever we submitted is shared through to the council members, because this is all operational, so basically the city is advising the city of how we operate, whether it's under different categories, transparency, procurement, health benefits. So it's just a yes or no answer, are you doing this or are you not doing this? Council doesn't change those answers. What happens is once you're scored, and if you have concerns about the score that we got, then that's, that's when we bring it back to council to say, these are things that the city is not currently operating according to the state, and then we make those necessary changes. And we had that in the past, and some of those unscored questions that typically you see on these surveys, state is trying to determine, or gauge through the municipalities are as they, as we evolve and working in municipal government. That's why you're starting to see a lot of the, at one point, we saw a lot of the cyber security questions, and then we upgraded to make sure that we were putting the city in a position that we were being protected in that area, and now that became a scored question. Are you complying with the cyber security activities? So our answer is yes, we comply, we do all of the training throughout the year based on our JIF, because we're a participant of the JIF. So I don't want council to feel that it shouldn't, that the document was submitted prior to your approval, because you're not really approving it, but your approval today is that we actually gave you the document, because the operation of the city doesn't change unless you look at it and say, you know, if there's an answer to a question, and one of the questions, the answer is no, you may want to ask us, why aren't we doing that? And then we have to sit down and talk about why aren't we doing that. So I guess part of the process is just to review it, and I think also have it reviewed in public setting as well.
So the state has already scored this, or this is just our?
Once we scored a question, it automatically comes up.
So once it comes back with their approval or their whatever.
They don't even really.
Okay.
But when we score it, up in our quarter, it touches, how many points you got? And you need a minimum of 18, we had 37.
And you can't change it. So if we, if we didn't score well, like, once he hit that submit button, whatever the answer is, is the answer, we have to bring that to you, and you all can see that we're not complying in certain areas.
And everything, I don't answer everything that goes to Ms. Payton. Some of the stuff went to construction, and then Davina has the last say, and she signs off.
So they post, there was three pairs of I's before it comes to committee, but in the future, I understand that you said that, you know, it's been done like this before, but in committees.
That's not what I'm saying, that we've done it like that before. I was telling you that the process is.
Well, the process has been done like that before, but in the future, if I were, or I'm asking, if in committee, if we can get the disclaimer that, you know, this, the deadline is November 1st, I know today's November 4th, and, you know, we just, then you could explain, you know, what you just.
Well, and I'll tell you, if you don't have it in by date, normally they will find you also if we're.
Well, I mean, and I get that, but if, if the deadline was coming up, maybe we should have had an earlier committee meeting.
Is it all sustained at?
I don't know. Now, is it all, does it always come out the same day?
It's, it's sometime in mid-October.
I mean, we can try to schedule it around that, but, you know, it's not, certainly the practice is not because we've done it before. The practice is, once it gets to me, I get it to committee, and then we get it to full council.
Any more questions?
So we're not doing this after session, is that what's the problem? So, first on the agenda is, for the, for the new ordinance is number 20 to 23, our second reading, which will be held, the public hearing will be held during regular session of the meeting. First one is ordinance number 20, Amendment Chapter 255, Article 5 of the City Code, entitled Streets and Sidewalks.
Any questions?
Ordinance 21, Amendment Ordinance Number 6-2018 of the City.
Any questions?
Ordinance 22, Amendment Chapter 235, Article 2 of the City Code, entitled Sewers and Sewers Disposal. Ordinance 23, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 36 West Washington Avenue, Block 102, Lot 1 in the city.
Council President. Why do you say different address on the, on the contract that I got? 36 is the address.
36.
36 is the address, 26 is the other day.
26 was on the agenda sheet, and explained to you at that day, at that time, the agenda had a typo. The contract you said.
Yeah, I remember about the agenda, but if I read it correctly, this is the contract?
Yeah.
Seller, oh, okay, that's the address, okay, that's right. Thanks.
Okay, contract says 36.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's like, I just want to make sure.
Sorry.
You always get, don't confuse me.
Just want to make sure we're persons, persons in the right property.
Got you, understood, so noted. All right, ma'am, who won?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 187, adopting procedures for administration and inspection of federal aid highway projects.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, can you speak on this? There's a question, I want to answer. Yes.
All right, so as you all know, we are the, the City of Pleasantville is the recipient of a federal grant. That is the Safe Boots Disposal Grant. We are the highest awarding in the state this year with grade schools for major construction as it relates for pedestrian walk usage or bicycle usage, for pedestrian usage. That is for Lee's Avenue Schools, Washington Avenue School, and South Moon Street School. Under the federal grant guidelines, any municipality that is a recipient of these awards must have in place all of the federal policies and procedures, some of which the city already has in place, some of which we do not. So what we did was, we took all of the policies, procedures, reviewed them all, and created a template for the city to use under the federal guidelines. Took that information to the finance committee, it was reviewed at that level, recommended to come before full council today for adoption, and you must have it in place to receive any federal funding.
And that's the first one?
This is the first Safe Boots Disposal Grant, and the award amount of over $2 million.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Resolution 188, submitting a grant application to execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority for the Food Security Planning Grant. Resolution 189, authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with Keyshad Re-Real Estate Developer LLC to negotiate a redevelopment agreement and re, an agreement of sale for certain city-owned properties located within the city center redevelopment area, and memorialize the payment of certain costs of the city to the city during the negotiation of the redevelopment agreement and agreement of sale.
What city-owned properties are we talking about? Specifically, we, we're in the part of Main and Washington.
Washington.
Washington, no, it's not Washington.
Oh, sorry. Washington and Main.
Washington and Main, okay.
Resolution 190, authorizing in-ramp foreclosure of a tax sale certificate held by the city. Next is review of the bills.
Should have, a bill, a twenty, a bill that will pay between the S Council meeting. S Council meeting, very top, we see one said $20,000. What it did, we had, put in RFP for inspection duties, and we had for $20,000 in guarantee, meaning he would guarantee the prices, and once you signed the contract, we'd refund them. So just kind of held the best road, we refunded that. There are a couple other than there that should have been paid last time, the fundraiser vacation, and we weren't able to get it. On the very, very bottom pages, you'll see the 423, which is the monthly health benefits for faculty from the entire age, and then the next one. Unforced on page one. The check register by check date. Next one, $6,000 on national Delaware camp for unemployment insurance, state taxes, state taxes, and then the payroll of the next Friday. Next, we'll go to bills to be paid. Most of, you look at, third one down on, for, we're probably safety group. This is for new police weapons. What we do every five or four, five, six years, they're traded in, and we buy new ones. Should I do that?
That's correct.
And. If you go to page two, second one down, the FC2A, is for the monthly trash removal. Four or five down below that, you'll see BTR Technologies Postcards. What this is, we sent out, we've sent out to all citizens, residents of Pleasantville, what the new assessment will be in 2023, if it's gonna change or not change. Give them opportunity, if they have to field the assessment, the assessment date where it has to be. One way below that, Vandy County JIF, this is the fourth quarter for property, work of comp, and liability insurance. The next one, Clean Air Company, we were receiving a grant to put a new clean air filtration system over in the firehouse to get all the fumes out, and after kind of struggle between the vendor and our code force, we were able to have everything in order. On page three, you'll see a number of bills from Cooper Leaverton. What happened in summary, Cooper Leaverton was sending the bills to our solicitor, and it was in her mailbox, and, but we never got it.
It was sent to the solicitor, so it was going in the mailbox.
That's been, that's been changed, now they come to the financial, plus they're emailed. So the bills weren't being, weren't being paid because we were never getting them. There's other bills on top of this that we'll be processing for next, the next payday, payday rate also.
And Mr. Luke, is there anywhere I can come see you so that I could, you know, see some of the bills?
And Mr. Luke, is there anywhere I can come see you so that I could, you know, see some of the bills that I've.
Sure.
Good, thank you.
Just let me know, we'll have everything ready for you. Um, most, all the other bills are pretty much, uh, see by the way, you know, see them. We just need to operate on them, uh, this time of year, we don't pay a lot, because we try not to do a lot, because the budget is, right now, is an area that we're really tight with. You're seeing on bottom of page six, the Pitas Big Top LLC. If you were out there Saturday, uh, over on the old turnpike when they had the fashion show, this is, uh, for rental of the, of the tent. This is coming out of, uh, NPP funds, so it's not part of the, um, city tax dollars. This is part of the grant that we give us. And. I think it would be remiss if I didn't see the very last one, page nine, Wendy Heinz. This part for reimbursement for the medical. So, any questions on any of these?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a question for the, um, Verizon wireless. I see the, um, I guess for one month, it was $5,000 for September to October, and then, um, then it says Verizon again for October to November for $4,980.
We, it's all, it's a Verizon wireless, Verizon wireless. These are all the phone, all the phones that police have, uh, and also their computers in the car, these are all the bills. We don't, all the bills come in separately, but we may not get them all at one time. But our, our phone bills, probably eight to 10, $12,000, eight to $10,000 a month for all the wireless that we have, because all the computers are wireless.
You said eight to $10,000 a month?
Yeah. And it used to be, actually, I was telling you, it used to be greater than that, when we went to, uh, what's called Anasero for our voiceover phone for our desk phones. Uh, but all the wireless stuff is for the police department, and any vehicles, we have, uh, all the phones, like I said, computers that have a phone number in a, in a car as well as a cellphone, so we're paying them. Not a lot of money for it, for it. And, uh, really, they're pretty much in line with everybody else, and they have the biggest, uh, biggest network in the world. We feel they're more capable of handling the, the flow that we have. But we, we have looked before at T-Mobile or some of the other ones, they just don't seem to have the capacity to what, what we need here.
Thank you.
Next is the public portion, anyone from the public portion, see, on agenda items, agenda items only, and, uh, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Priscilla Noel. I just got a question in reference, because the other ones are going to be read, so that we do, okay. So, in reference to Resolution 189, do you have the price of what the sale that would be?
No, that actually, uh, if I ask you ever since? This is just a memorandum of understanding so we can begin the negotiations of what that sale price would be. So this just, this resolution just authorizes the, the, uh, city to begin the negotiations of the sale.
Will it be market rate or?
We haven't started that conversation.
Okay, so this is just the pre-negotiation.
Document.
Will there be another resolution? Um, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Stand up, and say a motion to close the public portion.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. I have it. Okay, next is open for discussion. Councilwoman, how does you have it?
No, I'd just like to say, yes, I'd just like to say that, um, congratulations to the Jokers. I mean, we have three teams that will win the championship. I was meant to put in on Saturday. Did you go, Joey, and I understand you had someone playing somewhere?
No, no, yeah, I did, I did see they all three were going, it's wonderful.
So they're going to be playing behind them on, uh, Saturday.
Did you know the council that?
Yes, my grandson played.
Oh, okay.
And also, the volleyball team is playing for the championship tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It's tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes.
Same, but who was doing really good?
Yeah, at home. Think it's the first time?
The girls' break.
Yeah.
Girls' break, yeah, they're pretty awesome.
At this time, I, and say a motion to close work session.
Motion.
Second.
How did you do that, Dave?
Motion going to the executive session.
No, you said at the end of the meeting, so I'm assuming at the end of the writing. Yeah, of course. So do you change whatever around?
Let's make a motion to go.
A motion to go to the executive session. And say a motion to the executive session. Okay, now regarding, uh, please excuse yourself, uh, we're going to a executive session for.
Purpose everyone's.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, everybody, I'm sorry for the delay, purpose of, uh, full session was contractual negotiations, impossible to get over.
Okay, um, and say a motion to close work session, work meeting, motion.
Motion, second.
All in favor? All right, it'll take five minutes. Good evening, again, from City of Pleasantville, City Council meeting, uh, day's days, November 7th, 2022, time is.
It is 7:58.
7:58. All right, um, this meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper, performance, we're hoping about the D-Mat, uh, where the sun shine on. May please stand for invocation.
Swan.
Here.
Davenport.
Present.
Fennel Arrow.
Yes.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sistrum.
Present.
And say a motion to, uh, food pre-visitment.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have the allegation, prior information, presentation. Mary.
Have nothing, thank you.
Third.
Okay, first on agenda is ordinance number 20, second reading, public hearing is required, is amended chapter 255, article 5 of the city code entitled Streets and Sidewalks.
Second reading, one from the public, which is, we know this is the title, and this ordinance, ordinance, this is not force, it's named, this ordinance.
Priscilla Noel, um, what does this entail as far as, does this mean like development of streets and sidewalks, or what does that mean?
Yeah, it's a grant. And we gotta just grant the sidewalks and make it better, it's a federal grant.
So is this, all the pre-qualifications have been met for this particular one?
For 20. That's, um, that's regarding, um, any interested, uh, person that's interested in vacating a street or alley. And typically, they're interested because they own property that's, um, that they have an interest in, that they would have wanted to buy.
Yeah, okay.
So there's an administrative cost to that currently. The, um, code is, what is it, 200 or 250? But the, um, this ordinance is to raise the fee to $500, up to $2,500 based on the administrative work that's involved to do that. And that includes advertising, um, certified mail, and all the administrative costs associated with the request of vacating an alley or a street.
What were the, what was the, what was used to determine this range of fee schedule?
So it's not, it's not a range, so it's, and, and I can tell you where we got the $2,500.
Yes.
Right, that's where you're going. Uh, we've added up the cost that it costs the city to advertise, to send out mailings, and typically, it can run up to $2,500. And in the past, the ci, or currently, the city has borne those costs, now we're putting the cost on the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Stand up, questions, motion close.
Motion. Second. Motion to a doubt? Second.
Will call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Arrow.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number 21, second reading, public hearing required, amended ordinance number 6 dash 2018 of the city.
This is the second reading also, anyone from the public, if you don't miss, ordinance, ordinance number 21.
Yes, I have a question. As far as modifying the existing bond, what was the purpose for the bond before this, uh, introduction to amended?
So the old bond, the existing bond, was to do some upgrades in our current jail cells, but due to the development, or we're not having, thank God, that much activity within the jail, so the bond was still sitting, waiting for, um, work to be done. As we continue going through our capital improvement projects, we noticed that we had to move some money around to get dredging done, and we decided to use the existing bond rather than, um, taking on additional money for the dredging project.
And there were no restrictions, I guess, on the bond and how it would be used, it was from the, for the current fund?
You would have to do a modification, and you're doing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
Yes, last question. I just want to ask the, the, um, Ms. Payton, you know, you said that the, uh, previous, um, ordinance had the jail cell.
Upgraded.
Upgraded. Do we usually attach things like that to something that has enough to do with the other? I mean, it's the first time.
You're not attaching it, that's why it's called a modification.
Okay.
Right, so, um, we do have to get the jail cells upgraded, and we're just doing new bond for that, but currently, the work wasn't done. Um, so, and we asked the police and others, um, what was the priority on that? We certainly believe that dredging is, has priority over, uh, upgrading the jail cells.
Any more questions? Motion close. Second. Motion to a doubt?
Second. Will call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Arrow.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number 22, second reading, public hearing required, amended chapter 235, article 2 of the city code entitled Sewers and Sewers Disposal.
This is the second reading also.
Yes, sir, Priscilla Noel, um, when I first was curious about the situation with the sewer, um, and what we were doing to improve it and all the bonds, or the remedies that we were reviewing to bring everything up to snuff, um, I had went to the office to inquire about the fee schedule or, or for the FSEC and part that Pleasantville Services, and they said, oh, you have to over it. So I did, and that's when I learned during the summer that they were paying only $265 for the year. And when I brought that up, it was because I felt that it was an economic injustice. So I do appreciate y'all taking and rectifying that, but I'm trying to figure out what the fees are for the commercial and where, what did you use to come up to the 10%? Or is that always been the going rate for commercial or all others?
Yeah, magazine, I don't know if Gary's trying to.
The commercial rates are already, have always been higher than $500. Commercial rate will run anywhere from $1,500, I guess $1,200 or $1,500 or $1,700 per year. And what we're doing, we're just adding another 10% on top of that versus 2% for the residential in order to make the bound, make the budget in, in line and balanced, and able to pay for some of the improvements we want to do.
So what comparative analysis did you, like, use to, like, come up with, like, okay, we're going to back 10% for the all?
We did, we did a budget spreadsheet based on what we thought we needed and how to allocate the money. We, we were trying to keep the residential low, and so someone else had to pick up the balance. I mean, we don't have, we have one, I think, one commercial, we have, I'm sorry, one industrial, which was like $1,700. Uh, then the commercials and, uh, have gone up a little bit, I mean, it's, it's gone up 10%.
And the hotels?
Hotels.
Per, per room or per bed?
It is.
Is that normal?
It is, because a lot of hotels will have kitchen facilities, so they, they're charged, we charge two hotel rooms as a one residential. Unless they have a kitchen in it, then we can add the residential.
Okay, and who's going to regulate this, like, as far as, is that already in place?
The, the ordinance regulates it, so.
I mean, like, like.
Once approved, then all the people that are responsible for paying the rate, they'll get notified about what the new rate is, and, and through our normal procedure, through collections, that's how it was regulated and monitored.
Okay, so then they, they'll be, know who's supposed to pay what, because like I said, when I asked, they were like, oh, it's the same, and I would just say that. They said, oh, it's the same, until I had to over it and find out it wasn't the same. But again, I thank everyone for rectifying that economic injustice, thank you.
Any more questions? Motion close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to a doubt?
Second. Will call Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fennel Arrow.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sistrum. You abstained?
Yes.
So noted. Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number 23, second reading, public hearing required, authorizing the purchase of a real property located at 36 West Washington Avenue, block 102, lot 1 in the city.
Order 23, this is the second reading, anyone from the public, should speak? Stand up.
Right, I have a question. Um, what, what is, who's demolishing this, um, is that already been established, and would that affect traffic?
So, right now, I think we're soliciting contracts, so we don't know who's demolishing it yet, that hasn't been decided. But it will probably have some impact on traffic, if it does, um, everyone will be notified accordingly.
What's the timeframe?
We don't have any of that, because we need to get this approved first, and then we start working on the construction piece with demolition.
Okay.
We'll let everyone know, send it out as, as many ways as possible, so people will know what is going on. I'm not really sure what impact it's going to have on traffic, because the building itself is in the parking lot. So I'm thinking that it will have some impact, but not a lot, but we'll make sure that guys, everyone's know.
Where precisely is it in relation to the school?
So, if you know one, Washington Avenue, right where the fires house is on First Street.
Yeah.
That big monster building that's sitting right there on the corner across from the city center, on our parking lot.
No, this one's, okay. Um, has it been assessed, like, if it has asbestos or anything in it?
I think we're doing our due diligence now.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Stand up, motion close.
Motion. Second.
Fine.
All right, motion to a doubt?
Motion. Second.
Motion, second.
Will Cole Swann?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennel Arrow?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Orders adopted. Orders, resolution one eighty-seven, adopt procedures for administration and inspection of federal aid highway projects.
Motion. Second.
Are you, you asked for motion or you making a motion? You're making a motion, I want to make sure I'm right, because you did that, okay, second question, that's okay, because I didn't know you asked it, or what you made it, because you did that before, I never wrote your name, then I want to make sure I'm right. Okay, um, roll call please. Swann?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennel Arrow?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one eighty-eight, submitting a grant application and executing grant agreement with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority for the food security planning grant.
Motion, second.
Will Cole Swann?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennel Arrow?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one eighty-nine, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement, which each state development LLC negotiated redevelopment agreement and agreement of sale for certain city owned properties located within the city center redevelopment area, and moralized the payment of certain costs to the city during the negotiation of the redevelopment agreement and agreement of sale.
Motion.
Second.
Will Cole Swann?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennel Arrow?
I abstained.
So noted. Thomas?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
And then, Sisdrum?
Yes.
Okay, resolution approved. Resolution one ninety, authorizing interim foreclosure of a tax cell certificate held by the city.
Motion, second.
Will Cole Swann?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennel Arrow?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bill.
Motion, second.
Swann?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Fennel Arrow?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I wanted to set for the honors bill, so. All right, next, Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisdrum?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is public portion, anyone from the public, just speak on any time, we'll all come forward and.
Good evening, everyone, again, Priscilla Noel. I wanted to see, I believe we have two, uh, grant writing companies that we are, we have hired or payroll, I don't know the formal term. Um, again, I hope that we can do something about our bike path and improving it. One of your council persons up there said that it was up to the residents, and I don't know if that's accurate, because if it is, I will get a bucket of paint and paint to make sure that when people are driving along that route, where their bike path intersects, that they can see slow or that there is a walkway that needs to be had or paved, um, because this is a walking district, when in schools, where, when people are going shopping, or just going about their daily lives, we have public transportation access, and I would like our back path to look beautiful, something to beautify, because it looks like an alleyway. We hold and exalt our athletes and say, oh, yeah, you know, good job, hooray, they're representing Pleasantville, but what are we doing for them? You know, it is disappointing that Pleasantville was one of the last school districts to get out of school. All the other districts were already out of school for the summer break, but because the streets were not clean or paved or what have you from the snow, our children had to stay home, and then that extended their school year. So when we're telling these athletes, let's think about how we can have action plans that minimize the negative impact on their experience as student athletes. So that would include having a nice paved bike path, so that they can feel good about themselves. That would include looking into, which I appreciate, the grants to make the pathways, um, sidewalks paved. So when we are thinking about them as athletes, we need to think about them also as students, so that, that we do not have this happen again this year. Winter is coming, and I hope that we collaborate, the city and the school board collaborate, because it's one city, and that's what attracts young people, is a good city, a good school district, and if there can be a collaborative effort with the city and the school board, so that this is not negative impact on our students, then I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't think you can paint out here.
Well, talk to your fellow council people.
We got somebody out here, you can get with administrator. Anybody else from the public?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to, uh, let everyone know, on city council, we was talking about the athletes, I wanted to congratulate the Jokers, the volleyball team, and also the high school football team. Last year, they didn't, they were winners. This year, they turned it around, was in the playoffs, and got a playoff win. And, you know, our athletes are doing very well here in Pleasantville, and they're making Pleasantville shine, and I think that the city council should do something for these children, and let them know how proud we are of them. And I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Thomas, who, uh, made sure the football team had transportation to go up North Jersey, so the fans can go up and cheer for our football team.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas always goes above and beyond, you know, she had Halloween events, Christmas events, Easter events, food drives, when the height of the, uh, COVID epidemic, she wasn't home hiding, she was out in the park, she was knocking on doors and, listen, this is where you got to go, get your shot, she was out. I didn't see many, uh, council people out, but she took the risk and made sure that the residents were taken care of, and made sure they had to do what they had to do to stop spreading that disease that's going around. And when she's out, she's, not only that, when there's a fight, when there's shootings, she's there, she's out, she's out in the park. I mean, she does everything that she possibly can to make sure that the residents who voted her in, that, that they're taken care of, and when she's out in public with other, uh, officials, there's some of the colleagues who tell people, watch her, watch the company too, or maybe you should join her company, roll up your sleeves and do what she's doing, and the city of Pleasantville, as Ralph Peterson says, will be a city on the move. So, don't, you know, she doesn't get upset about what people talk about her, she doesn't, she says, they say whatever they want about me, I'm still going to continue to do what I have to do, because I was elected to take care of the residents of Pleasantville, and that's what I'm going to do, I don't care what they say. The people will know that I'm sincere about what I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Close, close, public portion.
Motion.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Place this, council, council.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and again, we want to support the Jokers this weekend as they go to violence in their championship game, and everyone that's here in my hearing, make sure you get out tomorrow and vote. Have a good evening.
That's my turn.
Yes, um, good evening, everyone, yes, get out and vote tomorrow, um, every election is an important election, um, I have a report here from, um, the recreation center, which I am the chairperson of that, um, of the recreation, um, just FYI, um, boxing has been canceled due to, um, the area, um. The area being cleared out for the new boxing ring, uh, basketball's still going on, uh, the community rooms were used by the Jokers, uh, last month, and there was a karate ceremony on Sunday, approximately fifty people, um, here at City Hall parking lot, we had, um, a spectacular, Halloween spectacular event, it was approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-five people there, um, I could not make that event, but, um, I heard it was an event that was well attended, that it was a very nice event, so I want to say kudos to all those that were, um, involved, and, um, especially to Katrina, um, job well done. And I believe that's it.
See everyone next month? Or this month? This month, okay. I wish you all here.
Congratulations to, I think it was the Pee Wees and the JV, they were playing Maze Lightning, and I think the varsity is also in it, I'm not, I don't remember who they were playing, but congratulations to them, congratulations to the volleyball team, the football team, uh, we just had the big tent, it was a fashion show with all the vendors that were there, that was well attended, the tent was filled with vendors, I hope that that becomes a yearly or bi-annually event, and there's going to be a couple more little things coming up this month, everybody will be kind of surprised. I'm not saying.
Councilwoman Swann.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming out, uh, I want to congratulate Matt Lally again for, uh, his promotion, and, uh, I guess Fred must have been real impressed with all those second readings, but just whispering through the. All right, thank you, see you guys.
Good evening, everybody. What'd you talk? Okay, um, I want to say congratulations to Sergeant Matthew, and to all the teams that won, Jokers, uh, Sankey, uh, also want to let, uh, everybody know, on this month, sixteen, we'll do the last full distribution at Pastor Youngest Church, will be the last one for the year, till we start again next year, and everybody have a blessed night.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, uh, I want to commend Priscilla Noel for always your concerns, uh, I really appreciate that, you always, uh, giving us, uh, your thoughts, and, uh, relieved me we, uh, take it in consideration. And, um, congratulations to all the athletes, Pleasantville, go Pleasantville, build the energy. Thank you, let's get out.
Uh, first, I'd just like to say, congratulations to Officer Matthews, but most of all, we have to get out here and support these kids, uh, you know, like I said, tomorrow, next volleyball team, and then we have the Jokers, uh, this weekend, so, and everybody try to come out and support the kids. I won't be able to make it Saturday because of, um, I'm working, but I will be there tomorrow, so.
Miss Payton?
Yes.
Miss Payton, you have a word?
I'm going to ask that, uh, don't want me to put you on the spot, but I think, um, we just checked the dates, um, and the next council meeting is after the event, so I think it's very important that you talk about the initiative that's happening November the eighteenth, um, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, and I think you are going to be very pleased, and we would hope that council would support this wholeheartedly, um, as we talk about the community outreach that's going to be ongoing with the kickoff of November the eighteenth, Chief.
Yes, so November the eighteenth, uh, it's, it's no surprise what's going on here in Pleasantville, uh, as it relates to the homeless population and the mental health population, drug, you know, population. So what we're trying to do, everyone knows what goes on in Atlantic City, they have a lot of support with the casinos and things like that, we felt that here in Pleasantville, we needed to start to do something here for what's going on here in Pleasantville. So, on the eighteenth?
Yes.
On the eighteenth, at the church that's on Franklin and Vicor Spike Island, remember the name of the church?
In its image.
Okay, in its image. We're going to be there with all types of support, volunteers of America, John Brooks,
Julius Family Services, Angels of Hope, Hope Wine, and I, I, I'm going to throw them out there, because I, we, and I, not to cut the chief off, but I think this is so important, because you all, as council people and elected officials, I know that we get calls all day long, every day, about those concerns, particularly down our Main Street, and what are we doing? Um, those are people that we know needs help, we know that they need help, right? And so we want to make sure that we bring the resources to them, um, we're having agencies there, um, from the Veterans Agency, the Homeless, um, Agency, there, people are there to help them with vouchers, um, drug addiction, whatever the issue is, I think on November the eighteenth, we have enough resources and enough funding for this initiative to make sure that, that these people get out. So, Chief, you want to talk about the setup and how that's going to work if there's a satellite office after that?
Yeah, so we, we're going to meet at that, that church right there, that's where everyone's going to kind of be stationed for that day, but the vision moving forward after that is our bus station, which is that space off, not the actual bus station where the people go in to wait for the bus, there's the other spot to the, I guess, to the east of it, to the right of it, right? We're going to be utilizing that spot right there as like a headquarters, and what we look to do in the future is, is try to schedule people, schedule these resources to be in that building, occupy that building, so we can direct people there for services, you know, moving forward. So, I mean, that's, that's the vision, we're, we're breaking the, you know, the ground roots of it right now, but I think, you know, as time goes on, we're going to continue to build on it, so we, we have somewhere to service our people right here in the city of Pleasantville, and I, I think it's needed, we all believe that it's needed. What time? What time will we start? Yeah, man.
Six AM.
Six AM. You going to be there? I'll be there. Friday, I'll be there.
Eight AM.
And, and Chief, you want to mention?
Do you need any help from council, anything that just?
Yeah, they do, they need everybody.
Everyone's support.
Right, so, the police and others have identified what we consider hotspots, where these people are, you know, illegally housing, so they're going to go to all these identified areas, we have transportation that's being provided by John Brooks and other agencies, so if someone needs help on the spot, they'll be able to get transportation, get a bed, get the, uh, intake done on the spot. So, um, if we can save one person, because this is where we're talking about saving lives and changing lives, right, we're not trying to push them off into another corner or drop them off in another community, trying to build people up, um, so I just, and I want to say it, because I think this is a great initiative, and I just hope that you all buy in and continue to buy in, and we want our business owners to know about it as well, so we're going to have hotline numbers, so that when these guys are not out there, the police is not going to be in the front of this thing, we want the people to be in front of it, they'll have a hotline, so if they have that person that's coming there that's doing things that they shouldn't do, they can just call a hotline, somebody come pick them up and take them to where they need to be.
That's worth noting that, I think you all approved the, uh, the bus that's coming there, that John Brooks is getting ready to come, and be at the bus terminal all the time, so this is, we said we were going to do that even before this, so this is a great addition to that.
On this particular day in the morning, just so everyone knows, what we plan to do is break up in the teams, because, and we're going to start in the business district, right there on Main Street, we know that there's a few spots, you know, where they congregate, uh, from what I'm told, they still occupying the building that we ran them out of there long. Yeah, yeah, so we're going to go into these spots, you know, there will probably be the officers like myself, you know, I'm not going to ask anyone else to go in there, because I do know the conditions, you know, I won't be in uniform, my officers won't be in uniform, but we're going to go get these people, and this time, instead of pulling them out and, you know, shooing them off, we're going to be pulling them out, you know, to introduce to, to the services that we're going to have, so, that's, that's the idea, you know, for, uh, for Friday, that Friday.
Thank you, chief.
My turn? No, thanks, chief. And I will be out, and I will be with the chaplain to my, to the left of me, because he has been doing a great job every day since he's been on prior to, to, and he's been hard here, so he's been doing this, and he's just a show, right? All right, so I'll be working with him. Thank you for your concerns, and I did over to my councilman, and I sit up here, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Yeah, you chief, that's something, I'm sorry.
Councilman, I just wanted to add, and Councilman Coleman, he does do a great job, all of our chaperones do a great job. They all are out there and they work very hard in this community. I, as the police chief, certainly, you know, appreciate what they do, because, you know, they do anything that's asked of them. They come out late nights, you know, early mornings, whenever that phone ringing and one of them's needed to go, you know, help a family that's in need, they are there, so, you know.
And we really appreciate it. Can you hear the chaplain? I got one to the left. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.